Hello and good evening, everybody. My name is Gerald Haines. I'd like to welcome you to this Wednesday, March 31st, special meeting of the Board of Directors of Spokane Public Schools. Just a few quick meeting notes by completing the registration link, members of the public are able to join in on special meetings of the Board of Directors. But members of the public are not allowed to give, provide public comments. So if there are any comments that you would like to be heard by the Board of Directors or staff, please make sure to send us an email at schoolboard@spokaneschools.org. And should you have any other questions or needs for technical support, please email Rochelle Miller at rochellem@spokaneschools.org. And with that being said, we'll jump right into the meeting with item 3A, Draft Proposed School Budgetary Changes Information Item Presented by Dr. Mark Anderson, Phil Crocker, Harriet Martin Morris, Craig Numata, and Ryan Rowe.
Well, thank you, President Haines. Tonight is kind of a significant milestone and about a journey that started in 2015. And we'll talk to you about that, about changing our school configurations, making it so we have the capacity for lower class size at our elementary school and for growth, as well as moving our sixth graders into a new six through eight middle school configuration and adjusting boundaries across the district to accomplish those goals. And so we have had a committee that, thank you, President Haines and School Director Lockwood have been serving on this last year. And this tonight, we want to present to you draft. When I say that draft, a proposed boundary changes, because in April, we plan to get more feedback from the community through M staff, through public forums, and then do some more work as a committee. And finally, come back to you late May, early June, for you to make considerations about these boundary changes. So with that, we have a presentation that we'd like to walk you through and then share with you some links and so forth that you can study afterwards as well. So joining me tonight is Phil Crocker, who's been working with us, a consultant, Harriet Martin Morris, another colleague who's been working with us for about the last four years. And then Craig Numata and Ryan Rowe have served as our great experts, technical advisors on these boundary changes with our committee, and both Craig and Ryan will be assisting in the presentation as well. Very good. Can you see the screen? Can everyone see that?
We're still in gallery view. Just looking at each other.
Say again.
We're still looking at each other.
Okay.
It's not being shared at all.
That was strange. How's that? There we go. Very good. So tonight, these draft boundary changes that we're going to share with you, they actually really won't go into effect until starting in the 2022-23 school year for the north side of the district and the 23-24 school year for the south side. But this all started a number of years ago when the legislature passed legislation to reduce class size at grades kindergarten through third grade. And as we attempted to do that, we really suddenly realized that we didn't have enough capacity in our schools, in our elementary schools to house K3 class sizes. We thought we might have to build six more elementary schools to do it, or if we move sixth graders to a different configuration up into middle schools, three new middle schools. So that was one reason that we've been studying boundaries for this long. The second reason is we're starting to grow with school age students in Spokane. If you've been reading the paper, you'll hear that Spokane is one of the hottest housing markets on the West Coast. And as people relocate here due to the good schools, the great access to recreation, good hospitals, and all around services. So creating capacity in our schools to accommodate neighborhood students is another reason that we're looking at school boundary changes. As I mentioned, with moving our sixth graders up into a middle school configuration, six, seven, eight, that's another reason that we've been looking at boundaries and opening those three new middle schools over the next couple of years. Kind of a secondary reason that we've been looking at boundaries is we've not changed boundaries, major boundaries, for 40-plus years. And what that's caused is we've had some schools overcrowded all the time, other schools underpopulated. And so to have a chance to kind of right-size the system for future growth and capacity at all of our schools was a second reason that we were looking at boundary changes. And then the third, another secondary reason that we've been looking at boundary changes is we have several schools that they split between their elementary and middle, and they split again between middle and high school, the cohorts. So we've been splitting neighborhood kids for several years, as many as 10 splits of schools. So if there was a way that we could reduce and keep cohorts of neighborhoods students together, lots of good research about if you can keep students together through their transitions, they actually academically succeed better. So here's just a kind of a checkmark of what you've been involved in, in the community, long-range facility planning. Both the community and the board's been involved in that, the great configuration study that we did, the bond that we passed with this in our partnership with the city of Spokane and libraries. We, the board adopted budget boundary adjustment guidelines. We are about to recommend to you through a committee, community group, adjusted recommended boundary adjustments, and then you'll adopt those in June. And here, this is where we are at the present time, and in June, we'll be at that adoption stage. Here's another way to look at it. We started this long-range planning clear back in 2015. After the legislation for lower class size, we did the great configuration study that the board approved in 2016-17 school year. That led to the bond to build three new middle schools in 2018. Then we immediately started working on guidelines for changing boundaries that the board approved those guidelines. And now here we are in the recommendation stage in 2021 of making actually the adjustments based on those guidelines and other factors which will occur in June. This has been the charge of the current committee that you have appointed to study and recommend the boundary adjustments based on the guidelines that the board approved. And we've had a very large committee that has remained very active. I've introduced Phil and Harriet, Craig and Ryan, but lots of community members from different regions of our city, northeast, northwest, the southeast, the southwest area of the district. We've had an education association rep, Karina Fletcher, who's a teacher for us up in the northwest portion of the district. And then several principals, assistant principals have been involved and on the committee, as I mentioned, President Haines, Director Lockwood, several central office staff, and then we called in Adam on several occasions to help us on the gift direction and provide, and Cindy also has been involved some as we need is kind of that finance work. So the current timeline is we started work in January of 2020 with our boundary adjustment committee. We've been exploring options for almost a year and three months, looking at different options, and finally have a draft proposal for you tonight. We're planning then to go out for a community feedback in April, come back to work as a committee in May, and then come to you in June, late May, June, to adopt the boundary adjustments. And as I mentioned, these forums, we will have a link up soon on how to register for those forums. And we'll talk about those a little later, how that'll work, looking for committee, community feedback for the committee. With that, I'll turn it over to Harriet and Phil to talk about kind of what's guided this current committee.
Thanks, Mark. So as you know, because some of you were around when we had the guidelines committee set up, these are the guardrails. These are the things that help us to check ourselves as we're doing all this work, looking at all of the different permutations, and believe me, they have been literally hundreds. And you know, Ryan and Craig have done yeoman's task in looking at all of those, those things. And I'm not going to read through them all because you can, you all are reading capable. But these were the things that basically helped guide us as we did the work. But there's a second level. And can you go to the next slide? And those, these are the things that influence the decision. The, as Mark said, that anticipated growth. And you know, this week alone, I got two articles written about developments that are happening in Spokane, and some of them are huge. And so we need to be anticipating those types of things, and they're happening right now even as we speak. So how do we draw those so that we don't have to come back two years from now and go, oh, my God, we gotta do a whole re-doing all this because this new development happened over there, and there's 500 families living in this one development. The other thing that came out of the work was maintaining cohorts and limiting the impact of the transitions going from elementary to middle, middle to high school, trying to keep kids together, neighborhood kids together, and moving as a group as they go through the different levels at school. And then the other thing is, as we do this, making sure that we don't push the balloon in one area and causes a bulge in another area and things become out of balance. We want, for example, our middle schools, in a, in a perfect world, you want your, your middle schools to be somewhere around the 750 range. That's the sweet spot, 750 to 800 is, is the space you want to be in. So as we do this work, then we create imbalance with that. And in some of the scenarios we had, that is exactly what happened. We had some schools that wound up with 650, and then another school that wound up with close to 800. And we tried to, to avoid that. And then family access to the school. So as we draw those lines, we want to make sure that families can get to the school via something like public transportation. Not everyone has a car. So we need to be thinking about those things. We don't want to put a school so far away from the kid's neighborhood that the family can't get to the school if they needed to or wanted to for an evening event or an after-school event. And then, under all of that, you know, maintaining the neighborhood cohort that, and making sure that we have a certain amount of socioeconomic balance between the schools. It's never going to be perfect. It's never going to be perfectly balanced, but how do we do the best job we know how? So those are the things that every time we work on a scenario, these are the things that are influencing what happens in the scenario.
Thank you. Phil. So this slide is just indicative of some of the data slides that the committee worked with. We wanted to walk you through one of them, but as Harriet talked about squeezing that balloon, you know, the, the city, folks don't live across the city in equally distributed socioeconomic patterns. And, and houses aren't built, you know, pleasantly in circles around our schools. So our schools are where they're at, and the people live where they're at. And then, you know, our goal is to try to get those neighborhoods and those cohorts together and then see what we can do on creating as much diversity in our schools as possible. The acronyms here stand for some pieces that Ryan and Craig ran for every single map that we worked with, with the committee. And I'll, I'll share with you that we're up to map number 119. Now, not all of them saw the light of day, but it gives you a sense of the number of iterations that we've gone through since January. This is an example at the middle school level of free and reduced lunch status, which is a proxy for socioeconomic diversity in your schools. And if you look at it vertically, you'll see that Glover's on the edge, and the top line is, is your current breakout. And we're using 1920 data, and we have throughout this whole process because COVID certainly changed the enrollment and the makeups of our schools this year disproportionately. And the anticipation is that we'll get back to what it was before in the coming year. So we're using the 1920 data as a placeholder as we do all this planning. But you'll see that that was Glover. It was 75.2% free and reduced lunch. And then in the proposed model, Glover drops to 66.8%. And there's more schools on the bottom because we're adding new middle schools. But as you look across, you can check changes. That is exactly the work that the committee will do on, on enrollment, on free and reduced lunch, on special education status, on English language learner status, on racial diversity status. Those last three don't change much across different plans, but boy, enrollment and free and reduced lunch status can change drastically. If you move a certain number of kids, and maybe it's a, it's a high-income neighborhood or a low-income neighborhood, it moves to a neighboring school and it looks good on a map, and suddenly you've reduced by 20% the free and reduced lunch at one school, you've actually increased it at the neighboring school. And it's possible that neighboring school was already starting higher. So you could have a 40-point swing on some of these. And, and that was, had to be factored in. We're just giving you some examples of what the committee struggled with as they worked through all of these iterations. This, early on in the process, some committee members said, look, can't we just balance free and reduced lunch and start there and, and then do adjustments? And we thought, okay, if we balance enrollment and free and reduced lunch, what would that look like? And Craig went to work with the specialized software that we have. And I'm going to have Craig explain this map to you because it, it, it sort of stopped that conversation and it's tracked. Oh, Mark, can you go back real quick to the previous map? And Craig, can you walk through this real quick?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I have to say about it is I solved it. So this, this map is perfectly balanced enrollment and perfectly balanced free and reduced lunch. And that's, then if you look at it, you can see that transportation would be a nightmare. We would be sending kids all the way across the district, multiple directions, and that has been, that has posed a challenge as we have tried to balance free and reduced and balanced population based on where, I mean, we can't move our middle schools. They are where they are. And we can't move our students. So as we were reviewing, we've kind of tried to tried multiple iterations to try and make this work. And this was one that, that early on, we had a really high interest in trying to resolve the equity issue. And this is about as good as it gets. And so we got quickly dismissed based on the transportation issues.
Thank you, Craig. And, and just for those of you looking at this, each of those yellow dots represents a cluster of free and reduced lunch students. And each of the blue dots represents a non, a cluster of non-free and reduced lunch students. And as we zoom in on our software, it actually starts to break the cluster out more, which has been really helpful when we, as a committee, have been working to say, we need to groove 100 students from school A to school B to make this work. What 100 students would be the best to move? And, and one of the factors we can look at then is, are there clusters of free and reduced lunch or, or non-free and reduced lunch students? And what would the impact be? So it's been really helpful. This is not a surprise. The, the vertical lines were a bit of a surprise, and it's, it's, it's a unique to Spokane's socioeconomic distribution across the city. Not surprising. I'm sure many of you would recognize that. But Harron and I, having worked around the country for over two decades on this, we can't think of a single urban school district that's been able to successfully reintegrate its schools in a sense, socioeconomically, through busing or assignments. Some schools we could have tried for a long time, and it just doesn't work. So, so the committee worked through that. And we got to the place where like, okay, for each of the areas of the city, though, can we do our best on neighboring schools? And again, try to achieve the greatest diversity we can within each of our schools, but recognizing the different parts of the city are going to start in different places. We also have the issue that everything is a bit of a domino. So you'll see that when we, when we make the, the great change that makes sense to everybody in one school, all of a sudden, it has a trickle effect into other schools. So here's an example where we needed to move a neighborhood. The committee wanted to move a neighborhood from one area into Finch, and that area N was one of the areas we were looking at. But by doing so, Finch then became overcrowded. So now we had to move some kids out of Finch. Well, there was this group of kids north of Audubon there that many of them maybe were choicing into Audubon already. So it kind of made sense, and they were closer to Audubon than Finch. So let's look at moving those. Oh, well, now Audubon needs to have some kids taken out of it. So it drove us down to do the same thing between Audubon and Holmes down there. And again, that software's been invaluable because Ryan was able to look at different options, different blocks of streets to say, if we've got three or four options of, of 50 to 100 kids that we need to move here, hey, here's one where 80% of the kids are already choicing into that school. Let's just assign them to that school. And, and it makes more sense. So I thought it was a really thoughtful process. What we did, though, was try, like, this is a situation that had to occur. It did happen to occur a few times around the district. But as we, as we met with you before, one thing we were careful on was to kind of do no harm. Like, don't move kids that you don't have to move. There were many moves that the committee could have made to make boundaries look better, to make things look a little square, a little more circular. But it was just moving kids to move kids. And so they were really thoughtful about any kids that had to move. And I, I think Harron and I were very impressed with their thoughtfulness on that.
And I might add, Phil, if you can go back one, all the letters that are on there, the N, the A, the Y, we got, we got all the way through Z and into numerals to, of sections of neighborhoods that we were contemplating before we ended up kind of pulling a lot of that back and trying to, as Phil said, do no harm.
I think that's good to emphasize is that we, especially at elementary, if we didn't have to move neighborhoods to a different school, we did. So you'll see at the elementary level, we've impacted a very small percentage, but logically, again, capacity of schools or, or the future, right sizing schools that were overcrowded, that type of thing.
And then, and another aspect that we, you can tell this is multi-dimensional conversations, and the committee got really good at it. But another dimension was the geography and transportation around the district. You know, this, this isn't Kansas. It's not flat. And what this is, is an example, if you look, you'll see that there's this gray area in the yellow circle. And there's a dotted line pointing to a gray area that is hot. Well, we had many maps where this gray area on the circle was pink or it was blue. It was contiguous, like, why not make them contiguous? We're doing some cleanup here. Well, it, it turned out that by doing so, we ended up moving, have to moving other kids in the pink and the blue and the green. So, so what, what happened is committee members actually got in their cars in the days following committee meetings and went and drove these neighborhoods to determine what's going on. And what we found, like, for this area here, these neighborhoods, the kids are on buses regardless of which school they go to. They, they have to go out to the freeway to get into town to, to go to a school for the most part. And they're not, there's no, like, you know, they're not connected to other parts of the pink, for example. So as we looked at those neighborhoods, we thought, you know, they're already on buses, and we could send them to this school, which isn't pretty on a map. But it lets the kids who concurrently walk to school continue to walk to schools and not start dislocating them and putting them on buses to other schools. There was also the factor in this specific area of the city, this is the southwest corner, that you're having a pretty big growth, realizing some big growth in this area, and it looks like you're going to have more. The, the district also owns property down here across from the golf course, I believe, right, Mark?
Yes, question.
And so most likely, this will be the location of, of your next elementary school. And by segmenting these students who are currently on buses and keeping them on buses, what you'll be able to do when you open that middle school or elementary school is you'll have less impact on the neighboring South Hill schools. You'll have to do less changes in the future. So the committee struggled with all of that, went back and forth. And this is one example that actually is in the proposal. But that's why there might be a few spots that look a little funny like that, but it's because geography and transportation had to be taken into effect.
And the, the effect of it was, and this is for the committee members who live in that area, were very, very helpful in this region. If we moved this gray area into, for example, the pink, because it, you know, it looks good on the map. They're all contiguous. It's good. Then we would have had to move students who could walk to their school to bus them to another school adjacent. So that walkability, neighborhoods were important factors that helped us kind of ferret through some of this issue.
So now some numbers, you know, these are the questions people are asking, and I'm sure you are, and, and the parents are. So how many students are actually going to change? Well, the, the percentage of students in the district who will have a future changed assignment at the elementary level is 8%. And that, that's a staggeringly low number for doing all district, all three-level boundary changes. Like, the committee can be really proud of that number. 8% of elementary students will have a different assignment when the, when the boundary goes into effect, boundary changes going to affect 42% of the middle school students. Well, that seems like kind of a high number, but we still should be very proud of that because we're adding 50% more middle schools into the mix. And if you think about it, when you add 50% more middle schools, it is not uncommon to have more than 50% of your middle school kids need to change to accommodate that mix. So 42% is a good number for that. And then 24% of high school students will have a future assignment that's different than today. And part of that is resolving some, a, a big part of that actually is resolving some historical strangeness up in the north that, that just, people shook their heads, but it had been that way for 20, 30 years. But the committee said, you know, especially the folks who lived in those areas, say, can we solve that? Can we fix that? Could people go to the school rather than drive past it to another high school? I mean, we can show that when we get later, but that's a big chunk of that. Overall, 30% of the kids in the district will have a revised K-12 feeder pattern. But what that feeder pattern is, is keeping neighborhood cohorts together all the way from their kindergarten to graduation, which we know has a very positive impact by mitigating transitions at the key levels. What does it all mean? It means that 99% of elementary students will stay with their neighborhood cohort into middle school. Right now, I think we have 10 elementary schools that are split where kids go in, and some of those kids get split again in the north to a high school. So they're getting split from their cohorts twice, having to make all new friends, all new, all new social circles. We're down to four. We actually, and I credit Craig and Ryan with, Harron and I were blown away. They brought a model that, that created 100% of elementaries, went to middle school. But on the South Hill, it got a little complex, and it introduced some transportation challenges that concern the committee for some families. So they asked us to step back and bring in some more models. And they determined that splitting four elementaries, keeping neighborhoods together was better. And so there are four, Moran Prairie, Adams, Hutton, Wilson, do get split. Some of it you saw maybe on that, on that previous slide. But all those students, when they, after middle school, when they go to high school, they're all reunited with their elementary cohort. So no student in the district is anymore split twice. And the nice thing is it still balances out the schools on enrollment. So every student is assured that they can get into their neighborhood assigned school. I mean, that should also allow enough elbow room and enough space that if someone wants to choice into a different school, there should be some opportunities for that. And, and both of those are challenges right now in some schools. The only middle school that is split in the entire district in this model is the New South. We'll show, and we'll explain why. And it's split fairly evenly. That was another one of our concerns is, is to make sure that if you do split, you don't peel off 10 kids, but instead you have a fairly even split.
So as you know, we have been working on a legacy policy, and, and Harriet worked with us on that. And so Harriet can talk about that, and I'll talk about choice. You're into your second reading and adoption of that legacy policy, which we had talked to you about at your next meeting on the 14th. So go ahead, Harriet.
Yeah. And, and you all, because you were in that meeting, know how we are defining legacy in this, in this sense. And that's, you get to stay where you are after the boundary change, if your boundary changed you to another school. For high school students, all rising 10th through 12th graders get to stay at the school that they are currently at when the boundary change happens. That's significant, and that's going to be something that you need to be able to sing from the rafters, as it were, because that's going to be positive. The same thing at middle school for all rising eighth-grade students. Now, there is a challenge in that because Now, there is a challenge in that because remember too, we are transitioning our middle schools to be six, seven, eights. And so there is some nuances that are happening there, especially in the new schools that are opening up. Because when they start out, they're going to be six, seven in their first year. So that's why we put it that way, that eighth, rising eighth graders get to stay. Some of the schools won't have eighth graders until their second year. So that's why I say there's a nuance there. Elementary school, all rising fifth graders get to stay at the school. So we don't have a situation where a student has gone K through four at a school, elementary school. They get to stay for their final year before they transition to middle school. But they will be transitioning to the new middle school with the new boundaries.
And then using our choice policy, using the example Harryam just gave, let's say I'm a second grader at an elementary school where my boundary has changed to go to a different school. I get kind of a priority as the legacy policy has it, to get the choice back into my school if there's room. If I would prefer to finish at that school and once I've choice back in, I can finish. I would have to provide my own transportation. But otherwise I would go to the new school. So the legacy policy that you're adopting gives kind of a, a leg up to the neighborhood student who got moved to a different neighborhood. And so that goes back to choice. We will still have our choice policy. And folks can still request choice to a school if there's room in that school or neighborhood students. This boundary change work doesn't affect our option programs at all because those are district-wide programs. So Spokane Public Montessori, Apple Programs, the Community School, the new Language Immersion Program at Libby. All of those are district-wide programs. And the boundaries don't impact those programs, nor do they are special programs. Our special education programs that we house at certain schools, those students will still get to attend that school for their services for special programs. So boundaries are only affecting neighborhood attendance area schools. And then the choice policy comes into play, allowing folks to choice back in. So with that, I think we're going to switch to showing you some maps that you have access to. I put it in board docs, but we also will have a link on our website. So here's our current elementary boundaries. And then Phil and, and Craig will zoom in with a bigger map and show you what the new proposed elementary boundaries will be.
Thank you, Mark. Doesn't look like it's sharing. Do you guys see it?
Yep.
Oh, you do. Okay, great. Craig, oh, that's the high school one though. Was it the high school or the elementary? There it is. Okay, we're all good now. Craig, do you want to walk us through some of the highlights? Not all the elementary schools changed, but there were some key areas that we want to probably bring to your attention and I'll zoom into them as Craig walks through them.
Sure, thanks. So the, the changes in the elementary really were on the edges of the district. We're seeing growth on the west side, gross, growth on the east side, a little bit of growth on the south. And actually some growth in the north. So if we start with the west, the, the River Run West Hills area that currently feeds into Hutton. So that's River Run and the Arboretum and kind of the Grandview area, which is the north part of one ninety-five and near I ninety. Those students all currently get transported to Hutton. And I don't, I think it's been forty years that that, that boundary was drawn. And originally there were not very many kids there. As that development has grown, it has filled Hutton up. To the point that they can't achieve lower class size. And I think they've had, had to give up their art room and some of their other spaces in order to just accommodate students. So one of the challenges that we, across the district, we're looking at those kinds of places where we could find, we call them the hotspots, where enrollment was exceeding the capacity of the building. So our, one of our first suggestions was to move the River Run and kind of West Hills area north to Finch. And then as we talked about the balloon model, it created Finch to be a little bit overfull. And then, so then we drew a little bit of space to move some Finch kids into Audubon and some Audubon kids into Holmes. And it kind of matched up nicely because Holmes was lower in enrollment. So we were able to, our projection is that we, we got some balance by moving those, by shifting those groups of kids around. Moving up to the northeast, this was one that we had really kind of planned from the beginning with the building of Linwood. We intentionally built Linwood larger to be able to take on more students. And Arlington's current boundary stretches west, so the light blue area stretches west across Nevada. I think all the way to Wiskom. It's about four or five blocks west of that red line there into the purple. And our proposal is to move those students that are currently Arlington into Linwood. And that was kind of an intentional when we built Linwood to be able to take on a little bit of that capacity. Arlington has for the last several years been one of our largest elementaries. Couple of years ago, I think they, I can't remember if it was five or six kindergartens. And that's just, that's a lot to deal with. So we were trying to right-size our schools and take advantage of our capital construction to be able to make that work. Moving down to the southeast, this is another area of growth that we are looking at, which is anybody who's driven down the Carnahan road there, there's a large apartment complex that has, it, it's nearly finished. It's, it's got some occupancy. We've been watching the enrollment in that area. Along with that, there, to the west across Carnahan, there's an expectation of about six hundred more units coming online in the next five to six years. So we've been looking at Lincoln Heights, Sheridan and Franklin as trying to figure out how do we, how do we shift enrollment around and fit into the existing capacities of those schools? Franklin, the furthest away is the one that has the most space. So we have a proposal to move some of the Lincoln Heights and Sheridan students into Franklin to help relieve some of the stress on Lincoln Heights and Sheridan as those new apartment complexes come online. One thing that we noted while we were looking at the area of Franklin, of the proposed area that we're going to add to Franklin, is that there actually were a number of students that were already choicing into Franklin. So that was a side benefit of families that were already attending Franklin. Now we're kind of making their, their boundary official. So that, that worked out for us. Moving a little further south, Mullen Road has, has historically had, over since, since our construction, where we finished the building and then a year later we added on an eight classroom addition. It continues to be full. So even though we move, when we move the sixth graders out, they will have some space. There still is projected growth and we wanted to be able to shift a little bit of capacity around. In order to do that, we are proposing taking one of the apartment complexes on Fifty-Fifth Avenue. There are three large complexes there that currently all feed to Mullen Road. We are proposing to move the westmost one into the Hamblin Attendance Area. Additionally, we are taking a little bit of the Mullen Road neighborhood that is currently surrounding Target there on the Plute Highway and moving it into Moran Prairie. And taking a little bit of the Adams enrollment area, which is also full and moving it into Moran Prairie as well. So I think those are the, the major pieces of what we have in the proposal.
Well, of our thirty-four elementary schools, a handful are affected with some boundary changes, but the majority are remaining the same.
I think Craig, do we want to talk real quickly about this side over here? I think it's important, the southwest corner.
Sure. So in that, Phil kind of talked about it a little bit in one of the earlier slides. But, you know, when you look at the map initially, prior to any of our boundary suggestions, the first thing you, you look at and you see that large area to the west of town that is designated as Hutton Enrollment. And you just look at it and scratch your head wondering who, who made that decision? How did that happen? Why is it still there? And I think that's been in place for roughly forty years. Again, it didn't really have very much enrollment to begin with, but it has grown and is filling Hutton. As, as Phil was saying, we played with trying to move those kids to the nearest contiguous on the map elementary, which would either be Wilson or Roosevelt, rather than kind of the, the initial look saying, well, why do you have to drive past two elementaries to get to the third elementary? And what we noticed is if you move those kids in the gray area to the west into either one of those two schools, then they become too full. And now you have to take the parts of those two schools and move them into other schools. And so it becomes what we termed, or what we used quite frequently as a bump and run. And it wasn't a one bump and run and one more bump. It was, that's, that's how we got to twenty-six letters and several numbers in our sections. Because we carved off multiple pieces and every time we carved off a new piece, we thought, oh, and now we need to draw another new piece. So we ended up moving like eleven pieces around to, to be able to make it fit and kind of went back to what really is our charge and also looking at the, the realization that these students in that gray area are currently being bussed. And we might be creating additional busing or longer walks for other students to be able to shift enrollment around to make contiguous boundaries on the map. And then lastly, as with all the articles in the paper that we've seen recently, we are anticipating a large amount of growth in that southwest area. And likely will need to put an elementary on the next bond. And moving students in, with a boundary change in a year, in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, and then building a new elementary, say, six, eight years, I'll defer to Greg on that one. And then redrawing boundaries again, when we kind of can anticipate that, that that is a very likely scenario. So trying to not move students multiple times.
Thank you, Craig. I think those are exactly the conversations the committee struggled with as they, as they looked at this and say, it's not pretty, but we think it could be the best for families in the long run. And that was kind of the discussion on the South Hill, just because the numbers don't work out as easily as the, on the north side. Though we had definitely different conversations on the north side. Why don't I move on, Mark, if, if you're fine to, to the, to the, to the middle school. Hold it, I've lost it. Here it is.
So and as a reminder, what Phil said earlier, we are changing fifty percent middle school because of adding the three new middle schools to accommodate our sixth graders moving up. And so we'll show you the, the boundaries of both the current and the new middle school.
Well, so this would be the new. Correct. So we have the new up here. And Craig, do you want to do something similar and, and walk us through the, the key changes in the middle school?
So, you know, the, the math, the simple math is we had six middle schools. We added three. That's a fifty percent add of middle schools. But really it's with nine middle schools to spread them out. Three of our, one-third of our schools would have no students if we moved, if we didn't move anybody. So it's really, at a minimum, we needed thirty-three percent of our students, our middle school students to be, have their boundaries redrawn. As we were kind of reviewing all of the options that we had, we looked at walkability and we looked at free and reduced. We looked at feeder patterns. And you'll see in the north, we have twenty-two elementaries and we were able to take either three or four elementaries and roll them all into one middle school each. And then with our six middle schools and three high schools in the north, we were able to take two middle schools and roll them into one high school without having to slice or divide any cohorts from elementary to middle or middle to high. It did because on, in the northwest side with Salk and Glover and the new Northwest Middle School, those three schools are all within about a mile and a half of each other. So there are places that we've proposed lines that a family might be directly across from a middle school that they, we're not proposing that they go to, that they, they would go to a different one. We did go through several iterations of what that might look like if we tried to draw lines such that we supported having as much walkability and nearness to the, the nearest middle school that we could. And it created fourteen or fifteen, I can't remember how many splits at middle school, from elementary to middle. And in this model, on the north side, we were able to reduce that number to zero. As you can see though, like looking at that spot that Phil just had, there are kids in the Westview neighborhood that are directly across the street from Salt. And we will send them on a bus to the new Northwest Middle School. The advantage to all of that though is that all those kids will go together. One of the, one of the ones that we kept going back to as kind of our, our base and our reset point was looking at Willard. Willard currently gets split two ways to Glover and Salk. And then it gets split three ways to Shadle, North Central and Rogers. And we just wanted to, if we could, avoid as much of that as possible. And I think based on this model, we were successful in the north. So what we have is Salk and New Northwest being the two feeders to Shadle. We have Glover and New Northeast being the feeders to North Central. And Gary and Shaw being the feeders to Rogers. On the south, it wasn't quite so clean. We have twelve elementaries and three middle schools. And then two high schools. The, starting out, we were hoping that twelve middle schools divides equally by three middle schools to get four elementaries per school. Hamblin and Mullen Road are the easy, clean schools to say, well, those two definitely should be candidates for the new south school. Jefferson and Adams are two of the next closest schools to the South Middle School. Jefferson has Sacagawea right in the middle of it. Adams has Chase right in the middle of it. So we were looking to see if there was a way to be able to, to have that same full cohort pattern, balancing enrollment numbers across the three schools on the south and make that work. One proposal we came up with was to get a direct feeder pattern was to take Mullen was to take Mullen Road plus Hamblin plus Franklin plus Grant. So that was four elementaries that had the right elementary size and also socioeconomic mix to be able to balance that out a little bit. We put that proposal out there and I the thirty seconds, we had responses that we can't do that. That that is just too far to send kids that are all the way down by the freeway, all the way up to sixty fifth. And we, you know, looked, we studied traffic patterns and transportation and all that and and confirmed that that isn't one of our bad options. Looking again at the new South Middle School, which was kind of the challenge, because you know, currently with Chase and SAC, I don't think there are any elementaries on the South Hill that are currently split. So we needed to find some more enrollment on both the west, the southwest side and the southeast side. If we if we took all of it from either the southeast or the southwest, we don't we create an imbalance between the numbers, the the number of students at each school. So we ended up to take about one school's worth on the southeast. And our choices really were to take all of Moran Prairie and none of Adams or roughly half of Moran Prairie and half of Adams. In that decision, we also were looking at walkability and proximity to schools. It's a little different from the north because we're splitting the school. So where we have in, we made decisions in the north that were students attending a different middle school from the one that's directly across the street. This one is the hardship is splitting the elementaries to to be able to create that walkability. By splitting Adams and Moran Prairie, we also created a little bit better socioeconomic balance between Chase and the new South Middle School. On the west side, the southwest side, we needed roughly a hundred students to to reduce enrollment at the new propose at the at Sacagawea and increase a hundred students at the new South Middle School. Jefferson is a really nice mix. It's about two hundred students. And we could draw a line of about a hundred kids right at Grant or right at Thirty Seventh. So we could have split the school east-west by using Grand as the dividing line, or we could have split north-south by using Thirty Seventh as the dividing line. Either way, you end up with students who are walking to the middle school and can see it from their house and we're putting them on a bus. We had a committee, a couple of committee members actually suggest a different alternative from that, which was to take the students in that southwest area new or off one ninety five and the Arboretum area, who also are already on a bus and send them up one ninety five on to Hatch to get to sixty fifth. The the distance between those neighborhoods and SAC versus sixty fifth, it's about twice as far, four miles versus eight miles. But because it's all highway, it's about a two-minute travel time difference. And as we are considering movement to i- if we build are able to build a new elementary in the south west, all those kids would be candidates for the new Southwest Elementary. And then they would be a nice match to feed into the south school.
Thank you, Craig.
I got everything.
I think you did. Mark, anything you want to add?
No, I think that's great.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate that. Oh, I do have one more thing I want to share, though. One thing we're going to put up for the community is it's sort of difficult to look at the current map and the proposed map side by side toggle back and forth. So what the what the school district has done is if I can find it. Okay, it might be here, but yes, they developed an online option. And it's taking just a second to load. You should be able to see it. But there you go, where families can go online. And they can, there's two versions. There's a lightweight version that loads faster and a more detailed version, which this one is, which loads a little bit slower. But once it loads, you can drag a slider and you can actually see the differences between the current and the and the proposed. And so the nice thing is you can look at a neighborhood that is important to you, like this middle part of the city. You can see how the new middle school layers across compared to the current boundary assignments right now for middle school. And there's one for elementary, one for middle and one for high. And we think that's going to be really helpful for families because they can focus on the area of town that they're really focused on, and then they can zoom in and they can slide it and see what the changes are like and how they might impact them in the neighborhood.
And then Phil, do you want to show high school?
Oh, I thought we had. You bet. I want to show high school.
So less changes at high school, but we were able to help with the feeder pattern as well as correct some areas that had been a question mark for years.
Right. So this this is using the cohort pattern. We were able to take a look at what us, what we in the committee would refer to as the North Central Horseshoe, which was the the students all around Shadle and some of them having to drive past Shadle in in order to get to their school. So this creates a little bit more of a cohesive pattern of elementaries to middles, middles to high without so much of a confusion about why certain sections of town have to drive past their what they would think is their high school.
And then again, on the south, there's that split from the middle schools back to two high schools with the elementaries being the split. Anything else, Mark?
I don't think so. So with that, let's kind of talk about next steps with you. So this is a chart that Ryan and Craig have put together, kind of an easy read. If 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 the map is too complicated, here's another learning style of looking at whether your boundary has changed or not. And maybe I'd ask Ryan to kind of give us some examples here of how to read this chart.
Yeah, so this one's supposed to be helpful to both administrators and to families. So for families, I think the most important thing is to to recognize that as Craig did so well of describing earlier, that that you may be going to a middle school that is not the closest one to your home address from your from your elementary school. But your whole elementary school cohort continues on to middle school and high school in most situations other than the new south. So as as families are kind of looking at those maps and and saying, wow, I'm really close to a middle school. It's it's just important that 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 was the reasoning behind it is is that we were trying to keep those cohorts together when possible. And then for our administrators, it's sort of, how am I planning for these boundary adjustments? How do they impact me? And and so we've got this out there, so it'll inform them whether or not we've got students moving in, students moving out, or students moving in or out, and then what their full feeder pattern is so they can kind of key in on how exactly these elementary and middle school and high school movements impact them, which can be hard to interpret from just looking at maps.
I think it just goes through all of our elementary schools and feeds them up into the middle and on into their high school. So this is arranged by high school feeder attendance area. That's how here's Ferris and LC. And there were some more of those changes we went over on the South Hill because of the number of middle schools and high schools we have. So what's next? So we're not asking the board to make any decisions tonight. You have a committee working on your behalf. And that committee is going to collect input on this draft at three virtual forums on the fifteenth, nineteenth and twenty second of April. Then the committee will go back to work in May and make further adjustments based on that input. Come back to you as a school board in a work session toward the end of May. And then have the board hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June second. And this would be the only topic on that off-board meeting day to have this public hearing for the for the community to give you direct input versus to the committee. So with that, we'll talk about next steps after this, but are so far, are there questions? Comments that the board may have, and then I'll talk about our next steps after that. And of course, Nikki and Jorrell are pretty familiar with all that we're talking about.
Thanks for all this. It's very interesting and I see why it's taken taken some time. A lot to process here. I'm just, I just have one question. I appreciate that you showed the socioeconomic status breakdown. I'm wondering and probably would guess that some of the public comment or questions would be around racial diversity also. So I'm wondering if we could get that broken down as you have with socioeconomic status for all of the schools.
Yes, we do have that data that we could display it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for all the work to the committee members. It's a time to go through and really well presented. So I appreciate all that work, making the presentation very digestible. Just a couple of questions. In terms of total bussing, was that calculated like kind of before and after how much? How many students would need to be bussed at each grade level?
So that's our next analysis that we need to do with our transportation department, but our sense is that it will not increase our bussing. Cause that, of course, we'll have three new middle schools that we have to bust to, so that'll increase it somewhat. But as far as elementary, we think it's a pretty much a neutral impact on bussing, but it will be an impact at the middle level. Am I Craig and Ryan and Phil, am I?
Yeah. We do have transportation represented on the committee so that it's not just us gut checking if if it's pretty close, but we do ask them to sort of stick their toe in the water at certain points. For them to do a layering of transportation and then do a comparison to current, we're waiting till after we get feedback from the community so that we know if we're at a near final or not. We didn't want to make any presumptions. And at that point, due to the guidelines, we will layer transportation on. And certainly, if it was wildly divergent from where you are today, that's a piece of community is going to have to struggle with it. But again, we've kept transportation close and so far there, every indicator is it looks like it's going to be sort of a non-issue at this point.
I would add that a school adding three new middle schools, there are actually some students that now can walk.
Right.
Like the the Mullen Road Elementary area students, not not the Eagle Ridge ones, they'd have bus anyway. But the ones that are right around Mullen Road Elementary, they can now walk to the new South Middle School. And same with students near the Northwest School and near foothills.
Thank you. And then in terms of overall enrollment projections, it seems like when we've last looked at those projections in terms of enrollment, it's been, you know, kind of mild growth or and even I think in some years, not necessarily fairly in the near future flattening out, but either is my memory wrong or have things changed a lot? I know that, as Mark mentioned, you know, Spokane's a more of a destination probably than it than it was a year or two ago. Is that really becoming evident in the data and and sources that you use to to look at projections?
You know, I I don't. That's that's based on based on the housing market and that would be our estimate is that it will start to grow. It just this trying to use the data that we have based on current enrollment, the number of students that left and trying to determine whether or not those kids are going to come back or they found another solution that they wanted to stay with. I I it's really difficult to say, but I we do expect based on some anecdotal responses from principals saying, hey, we lost fifty kids this year and most of them are calling to enroll to to get to come back. So I I expect it to stabilize and then maybe, you know, a year or two down the road as these new apartment units and such get built, we probably will be poised for some growth. But I don't know that we will expect to see that at the first year of the boundary change.
Okay, gotcha. And then kind of a specific question of, I know the Franklin, a lot of the Franklin Elementary community was was looking forward to proposing a K eight sort of program. It looks like the enrollment that you're talking about, Craig, would would looks like you're moving students into Franklin that might preclude preclude using some of that extra space for a potential middle school program. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, we we struggled with that. We we were aware that that was is and has been an ongoing interest for a long time. What we were not aware of until this year is the six hundred new apartment comp or six hundred new units and continued housing development that's happening over in that area of of the city.
Gotcha.
So and and I guess I so I I mean, what we were kind of trying to weigh is whether or not we could start the program, grow it to six, seven, eight, and then what happens if enrollment balloons on us? What solutions do we have next? And that that's really where where the struggle was.
And so you're saying there aren't solutions that are evident right now? Is that what you're saying?
At at the at based on this proposal, I would say we don't have a good solution that that fits both.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
This is Nikki. I'd just like to say thank you for all the work, Phil and Harriet. I appreciate your management of the committee. I know I've only been on it for half a year, but just really appreciated all the tough tough spots you got us through. And I see a lot of committee members on the Zoom meeting tonight. So I just really want to acknowledge the the commitment, the collective wisdom and insights that the different neighbors, educators and administrators brought from from their experience, living where they live and working where they do. It just really, I think, brought us to a really thoughtful and informed. Some thoughtful and informed solutions to share with the community, which I'm I'm excited to see what the community thinks too. But I think the the cohorts, I'm just, I think that that's great that we're able to do that and knowing that that's important for students' success. So thank you all. Very grateful.
Thank you, Nikki, for recognizing the committee members. These folks have, for a year and a half, have given like every other Thursday night, a couple hours of their evening to work on this. And I think Phil and I always look at the number of, I think, oh, holy smoke, everybody's here again. So that's great. Well, next steps. So we will have the forums next in April and our communication department is working with Ryan and Phil and Craig and myself, and they're going to have just a great package of making sure the community is well-informed and encouraged to attend these forums. Thanks to Sandra and her team. Then our committee will go back to work in May, late April, May, and make some further adjustments. Then we'll have a work session with you on May twenty sixth to go over the revisions that we've made pretty much kind of like tonight with more chances. to go over the revisions that we've made, pretty much kind of like tonight with more chances for you to ask questions. And then we will hold that public hearing. It'll be a school board public hearing on June 2nd to take testimony and comment to you about the changes. And then like we do a board policy, we'll have a first reading again where folks can comment on June 16th and then a final adoption of the new boundaries on the 23rd of June. Then that'll give us a year to be working with our schools and families to plan for the first adjustments, which will be in the 22, 23 school year on the North Side. And then three years actually, or two years ahead, head on the South Side for the 23, 24. So that's kind of the, the long range plan and that's connected with the new middle schools opening so that we can actually implement the boundary adjustments. So with that, President Haynes, thanks for the time this evening and that's all we have for tonight.
Absolutely.
I'd like to add one thing, Mark, just, just so you, for the board specifically, if there are things that would be helpful to you to, to create some armor around you in preparation for this. Please let Mark know what things would be helpful to you as you prepare to engage the community on this, because I think that's going to be important that you feel comfortable with and knowledgeable about what's happening so you can answer those questions in the safe way. I would talk about the safe way moments, they're going to happen. So we want to make sure that you're armed with everything you need to be able to address something in the safe way.
Thank you so much for that, Harriet. Thank you, Phil. Thanks, Ryan. And thanks, Craig, of course, for your number crunching and readjusting each and every one of you. And we look forward to these future forums. With that being said, we'll move on to our next agenda item, item three B, name change request for Sheridan Elementary School, presented by Dr. Mark Anderson.
Thank you again. We do have interest by one of our schools in asking the board to consider a name change for their school. And I just have one slide to kind of remind you of what the board policy and procedure is on changes of names or mascots. So a stakeholder group, in this case, a group from Sheridan did request for a change of their school name. And that request was considered and placed on your agenda for this evening. So we are at step three. Where that we're asking the group to come and present to you the reasoning for the request for a name change. And that's basically what you'll listen to tonight. Tonight you can, by consensus, not a vote, decide that you would like to hear from the public about that. So that would be step four, where you would actually schedule a public hearing at a regular board meeting about the request to change the name. And that's where you could get input from the entire community about that request. After holding that hearing, the board then could make a decision whether or not to grant the request to change the school name. If the board did decide to grant the request to change the name, in this case of Sheridan, then your process of naming a school goes into effect. Where you would collect potential names for the school, solicit them from district patrons. We would set up a screening committee, just like we have now to screen down to three names that you would present, that they would present to the board to make a final decision on the new name for that school. So tonight we're kind of at that early stage of basically letting the Sheridan stakeholders present their reasoning for wanting to change the name of their school and then allowing you to consider that and whether you want to hold a public hearing at a future board meeting and what and advertise it well. So the public has a chance to, to weigh in on, on that issue. So with that, I think we have some folks from Sheridan here. If Michelle could bring them in and they would like to present to you. Principal Cosano, and I think he has a student and maybe some others with him.
Larry. Hey, good, good evening, folks. So for those of you guys who have, who are parents, right? You realize that this is kind of the prime time for like pickup and drop off of events. So if, as I'm talking and as my awesome sixth grader Kylie Mitchell Greg is talking, you hear a thirteen, eleven and nine year old come in talking about landing a double pirouette and their, you know, ensemble dances and their YGP ballet competition that's happening next week over spring break. No apologies, because that's just life in the Kisanau household. All right. And so, um, hey, so again, this is not a big presentation. This is more about allowing student voice to take place. Again, President Haynes, Dr. Swinyard and the rest of the school board and the DLT. I am Larry Akisano. I am the proud principal of Sheridan Elementary in the East Central Neighborhood. And we're gonna have my awesome sixth grader who has been nervous all day, but she's going to do a fantastic job. Kylie Mitchell Gray. Go ahead, young lady.
Hello, my name is Kylie Mitchell Greg and I am a member of the Coeur d'Alene tribe. I'm a sixth grader in a school in the East Central Neighborhood. A few years ago, I did a research project on Sheridan, found out it was named after General Sheridan. In the eighteen eighties, he was a commander of the army. This was during the Indian wars. His, his plan was to destroy native villages and food stores and slaughter all the buffalo which tribes relied on. He did not care if children and women who were not fighting in the war also died. He is now for saying the only good Indian is dead Indian. Therefore, I think our school should be renamed. I love my school, but hate going into a school that is named after useless human being, Lem Lunch.
And for those of you guys who may not know Lem Lunch is the, you know, the sailors word for thank you. Again, Kylie was very nervous, but she did absolutely amazing. Her principal may order some lunch on Friday with a friend and we will be socially distanced, Dr. Anderson. So just so you know, that's going to happen. And just, it's just real quick on the history, you know, Kylie was a fourth grader at that time. And I was just, you know, a principal in year five, just trying to win the day, you know, at Sheridan Elementary and that impacted me. And ever since that time, I've been referring to the school as East Central Elementary. And, and for me, and I, I'd say this in the most respectful manner, I don't care what we name our school. I'm not married to East Central Elementary. I just think that it's, it, the time is right and prime to make some things right that were wrong in the past. And I think the board and our school district is in a position to, to make that. And I will, I did spend some time at Rogers High School and similar to referring to our, our, our sports teams as the, as Hilliard High. My neighborhood and my kids and my families needed to play some, you know, to be proud, to be proud of, right? And so we are proud to be from the East Central Neighborhood. And so, you know, we're not kind of standing here and saying name our school that. I'm just saying, just please consider renaming this, renaming a school that to some doesn't reflect who we are as educators, as, as a community and as a family in the East Central Neighborhood. I will end with this, just because I did not want to take up a lot of your time. I did spend some time on developing an Indian reservation, you know, working with Spokane Tribe. And I would have been there my whole career. No offense, Dr. Swinyard. I would have been there my whole career, but you know, you have babies and you're an hour and a half from school. It kind of does some things. Again, in quoting a Spokane elder, her name is Pauline Flatt, I often called her grandma. She's no longer with us today, but when I was working on the rez, she would always say, please, please, please listen to the children. Please listen to the children. I think with that testimony from Kylie Mitchell Greg, I hope our school board in our district does the right thing and listens to our children. So thank you for your time, everybody. Thank you.
You definitely owe Kylie and a friend lunch.
So with that, the board can deliberate tonight or at another time, whether you want to hold a public hearing based on the request to change the name. And that public hearing would be at a regular board meeting, but which should be well advertised so that the public can weigh in on the request.
And as Dr. Anderson mentioned, this isn't an action item per our policy. We're, we're looking for board direction on your intent for us to schedule that public hearing.
I 100% am behind scheduling a public hearing.
Uh, Principal Larry, I'm wondering, I had some time to was fortunate enough to spend some time talking with you about this early when I was elected to the school board. I'm wondering if you could also talk about the community's reception to your calling the school East Central Elementary and how supportive are they of this?
It's been great. And, and I think, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to paint a perfect picture, right? Because nothing in life, and I had a good lesson for Kylie Mitchell Greg, nothing in life will get 100% consent, right? And I think in the times where we disagree, I think that's the great opportunity to start listening, right? And so in the very, very few conversations I've had about, you know, why the name change? And, you know, for those of you guys who don't know my background, I am a first generation, right? I do not come from a military family. And so you could anticipate that some of the conversations I've had, and they've been very, very few. It's been, you know, you're trying to dishonor an army veteran. And, you know, when I've invited people who've disagreed to come and have a conversation as to the why, for the most part, it's been great. But, you know, sometimes they've chosen not to, you know, communicate with me and that's okay too. But I guess within our community and, you know, I, I'm, I'm a pretty visible principal. I'm, I'm out there all the time. In every conversation I've had, and I'm very open with referring to our school as the, the proud school in the East Central Neighborhood. It's been galvanizing, you know, it, not this year with, with COVID, all of our numbers are down, but incrementally, we've, we've grown from a school of right under a shade of 400. And Craig can attest to this to well over 500 kids. And, you know, we take special transfers all the time. And then the pride in our school is not just within our, our neighborhood kids, but, you know, people who transfer in. And we got kids transferring in from the South Hill, believe it or not. And that pride just goes a long way. When you have a diverse school like ours, when I hear kids say, wow, we go to school with the world. They go, yeah, you go to school with the world. I think that's just a beautiful thing. So it's been, at least from our community, majority has just been all over and they just can't wait for the board's decision and move forward potentially with the process of and the excitement in the process of renaming our school.
So I grew up on the Yakima Reservation and taking history at the Yakima Tribal School was a little bit different for me. I was able to learn history from the tribe's point of view that were affected. And so I got to learn about Sheridan and Stevens and everybody that was involved in the, the Yakima Wars. So I support um, bringing this back and having some community discussions. I don't see this as revising or erasing history. I really appreciate the policy that the board put in place because it brings visibility to issues that are still affecting Native American communities through historical trauma and white supremacy culture. So I appreciate you being here. Both of you, Kyle, Kylie Mitchell, Greg and Principal, I just, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I also want to say thanks very much. Kylie did a great job and, and thanks, Principal Cosano for your leadership for your school and for bringing this forward. And I support a community forum.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kylie. I teach at the upper division high or college level. And I have a lot of students who aren't always so eloquent in their speeches and you did fantastic. So I appreciate that and I fully support bringing this back as well.
This is Nikki Lockwood. I also support taking it to the next step. I appreciate you both coming here today. And Kylie, I can imagine that this was nerve wracking for you to, I was thinking about you when I read the paper this morning thinking, oh, I bet she's nervous. But we love hearing from our students. So you are always welcome. And along with other students, we, we really appreciate when students can come forward. So and I've read about the work that you did, you know, in, in former stories. And so I just appreciate you putting yourself out there and having this passion. And as Director Swigle mentioned, you know, I've heard other local native community members mentioned the generational trauma that continues. And if there's, you know, some way to, to repair some of that harm and look at history more fully, then I think we should take that opportunity. So I appreciate this. I also, you know, we're in the middle of naming four schools right now. So we're in a naming process and we have over 1,700 submissions for names. And I will say that Ms. Paulette Flatt was one of those names that was submitted. So it was a familiar name to me and, you know, folks would say why, why they put in those names. So certainly wanted to just acknowledge that. So thank you for coming tonight.
Well, with that direction, I think we'll work with Jorrell and Adam to schedule a public hearing time here and after the spring break, figure out a board meeting that we'll do that at and add that to the agenda. And I think that again, we would have a short introduction to the community of what the renaming process is and the request, and then let the public provide board comment. And it certainly would be appropriate, I think. Kylie and Larry and others from the Sheridan community would like to come and testify to the board at that public hearing, certainly plan to do so.
Can I, can I say one quick thing? And this is not for the adults in the room, this for Kylie. Kylie. This is what it's about, Kylie. This is what it's about. Doing the right thing and being a person of integrity and speaking your voice and maybe we are the people that we've been waiting for, right Kylie? I'm really proud of you, young lady. You got some lunch and I got your ice cream too. I don't care what your mom and dad says. All right.
You make sure you hold them to it Kylie, and we look forward to hearing from you again at the public forum. Please come. All right. Thank you, Principal Costano and Kylie for joining us and presenting us with your thought provoking statements and comments. So with that being said, we'll move on to item three C, school reopening update presented by Dr. Adam Swinyard, Dr. Mark Anderson and Heather Byde.
Thank you, President Haynes, members of the board. Rochelle's going to bring up short PowerPoint presentation and we're going to talk with you this evening about the updated guidelines that we recently received from the governor's office and the Department of Health. So Rochelle, you can advance it to the next slide. Thank you. So the, the most substantive shift in the reopening guidelines for school reopening for the 2021 school year is adjustment of the social distancing between students to three feet in the classroom setting. So at the start of last school year, this current school year, those guidelines required that we have six feet of social distancing between our students. Dr. Anderson and the facilities maintenance team conducted a significant process over the summer to retrofit all of our classrooms to accommodate the six feet of social distancing. We also then, in conjunction with that, staffed our K four classrooms so that they would accommodate students attending every day. And at the same time, having the retrofitting those classrooms accommodate the distancing guideline of six feet. And then we also retrofitted our five 12 classrooms to make sure that it was apparent and develop protocols to ensure that in our hybrid model, students maintained that six feet. So this is a shift. So this is a shift to three feet inside of the classroom setting. It's important to note that the guidance include the distance between staff as well as between students and staff remains six feet. So that requirement stays in place when adults are involved. A really critical aspect of the guidelines that warrant our modeling is that they require six feet of distancing between students in specific circumstances. That includes when masks can't be worn, such as eating. So during lunch, we have to maintain six feet of social distancing. If they are in middle, high school students, and they are not cohorted, and the community transmission is above 200 per 100,000 over a 14 period, a period or test positivity is above 10%. So there is an interconnectivity with the age of the students, our ability to cohort, and what the conditions are in the county as to whether or not the three feet can be implemented in the classroom setting. And then the third aspect, when six feet would be required, is in situations that express increased exhalation of students such as choir, band, and physical agitation. So when students are involved in exertion, that would then maybe create a projectile scenario for droplets. The science does continue, and the guidelines continue to require that universal masks are worn by all individuals that enter the school setting. So these are the models, these are the conditions in which we have begun modeling feasibility for potential adjustments to our reopening plans, specifically fifth and sixth grade at the elementary level and grade seven through 12 at the secondary level. We still have work to do to continue that modeling. And Rochelle, if you could advance it to the, the next slide. We've got work to do to model out the feasibility of implementing these guidelines. And as board members and the community is well aware, we've been steadfast since last March in our commitment to follow the guidance of our public health officials and return students back to in-person instruction as soon as possible as deemed safe by public health officials and in accordance with whatever guidelines they have provided us, which, as we know, has, has evolved over the course of the pandemic. At this point, as we are modeling the feasibility of fifth and sixth grade, although there are some challenges, there is optimism that fifth and sixth grade may be feasible in order to meet those guidelines. Specifically hurdles are related to lunch, as well as those specialist classrooms for health and fitness and situations where students are in developmental music, singing, and band. Our modeling at the secondary level is presenting some significant logistical challenges to meeting the guidelines. We're gonna continue to model that out and talk with our staff in our school, our facility teams, based on our available timeline to implement these changes. So that's something that we are gonna be working very hard on over the next several weeks to really ensure that whatever decision we make, we are able to implement the guidelines with fidelity and maintain our commitment to our staff, our students, and the community. One of the most significant challenges at the secondary level will be lunch. And for example, the concept of having almost 2,000 students at Lewis and Clark High School eating lunch while maintaining six feet of social distancing is requiring a lot of modeling and evaluation of the spaces available, the scheduling of the building, and just the appropriateness and the feasibility of the spaces that we have available to us to make sure that we would be able to meet that specific requirement. What you're seeing from some school districts across the state is every district has approached this a little bit different. For example, Central Valley School District has been a close partner to ours throughout the pandemic as we've collaborated with them. You, board members are probably aware that they did make an announcement to return full time. In their model, their students do attend half day. So they'll have all students attending half day, but they will do a grab and go lunch. And so their students, in comparison to ours and our current hybrid model, are, will be attending a comparable amount of time to in-person instruction. So there's multiple different ways to approach how we would potentially finish this school year. And there's a number of factors that, that need to be considered. Most importantly, obviously, is following the guidelines. We're also considering the, the transition for students and the amount of time that it would potentially take us to retrofit those classrooms. In addition to that, we'll continue discussions with the Spokane Education Association regarding potential impacts to negotiated agreements and the extent to which any shifts in our reopening model may impact working conditions for our certificated and classified staff. So the commitment remains the same. Follow the public health guidelines, return students as quickly as we can, as it's determined safe to do so, in accordance with ensuring that we are able to meet the requirements that have been laid out before us. So our plan is to continue to model these different scenarios and the feasibility, both for fifth and sixth grade at elementary and middle and high school at secondary. And then we plan to provide an update on April 14th to the school board and the community regarding the outcome of those feasibility modeling that we're currently conducting. So with that said, Rochelle, if you can bring down the presentation, district staff is happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
I just appreciate the commitment to following what we've, as you mentioned, what we've kind of done all along, with, which is the guidance from state and local health officials. And, and so, so it sounds like that, you know, I guess I also wanted to say that we'd have every student every day, even at six feet, if we, our buildings were twice as big and we had, you know, much larger spaces for, you know, waiting in lines and serving food and that sort of thing. So I can appreciate the challenges of maintaining that six feet during eating. And then if every student is there for gym, you know, how do you, how do you do that? That's a challenge in and of itself. But I guess any, any, is there been any guidance from the governor's office or the DOH around when they might reevaluate that, the six foot guidance that remains for, for those periods?
Yeah, that's a, that's an ongoing discussion. We've had some initial indications that there'll be clarity in the coming weeks and finalization of what that guidance will be for schools in the fall. We continue to be very optimistic that our return in the fall will reflect a typical school day, both in our ability to plan out what that will look like and to staff appropriately. What we continue to advocate for is as much clarity as soon as we can, we can receive it so that we can then make the adjustments that, that we need to make and to evaluate the spaces that we have available and the number of students that we might place in each classroom. And yet you bring up an excellent point around health and fitness. Another good example is choir. We have a section, for example, at Ferris High School that has 65 students in their choral course. So maintaining six feet of social distancing for 65 students in one space at one singular time. Again, you, you model that out exponentially across the choral classes that are happening during that period, the band classes that are happening during that period, health and fitness classes that are happening. You are then requisitioning a pretty significant amount of space. So that's the planning that's happening right now. We're working really closely with our high school principals, talk with them to really understand other spaces. All these things are eventualities that have been thought about and considered throughout the year. But until you know specifically what the guidelines are, that's really when Dr. Anderson and his team can engage in definitively planning out whether or not it's gonna be feasible within the model that we currently have. And again, the, the six feet requirement in those specific settings is the, the most significant planning consideration that we have to look at.
Thank you.
Dr. Swinyard, will the April 14th update also include an update about potential graduation this year?
Yes, our plan is to begin that conversation with the school board, and on April 15th, provide several conceptual concepts for us to, to pursue. So if that is the plan. Lots of wonderings about graduation.
Yeah, I have a senior this year, so I have a lot of wonderings about graduation. So a quick question, how, what's the current community transmission rate for 100,000? I always have a hard time finding that number. Is it below 200,000 or 200, I mean?
Yes.
It is, okay. All right.
Haven't seen that number specific today, but it's.
167.
Yeah.
Okay.
And one thing, look, thank you for bringing that up, Director Lockwood. One thing that's been a little bit confusing to our families as we've been fielding inquiries is CDC talks about the seven day average, and the governor and the Washington State DOH has talked about the 14 day average. So there's been some confusion about these new guidelines from the CDC that say under 100 for a seven day average. That has been confusing for some of our families and some of our staff. And so that, that point of clarification is Washington State is talking about a 14 day average. The CDC and their guidelines is talking about a seven day average.
And then you said that Central Valley is gonna come back every day for half day. What are they currently doing? Are they, is it similar to what we're doing?
They're currently doing a three period day with a grab and go lunch. So their model will, will be similar to what they currently have in place. They'll just be adding the rest of their students to that model.
Okay. I don't think I fully understand that.
It's, it's, it's a three period day, so they go half day, and they currently, currently they're going half day, and they're doing a grab and go lunch. And so when they bring all their students back, they'll continue to do a half day and do a grab and go lunch. But instead of having half the kids attend, they'll have all their kids attending.
So they're only going like two days a week?
It's every day, every day, half day.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay, it's just different halves is what you're saying of the day. Okay. It's, okay. So it's similar to what we're doing in terms of we're doing full days.
Yep. Yep, they're, they're gonna do five half days and a grab and go lunch. And our current model is our kids attend all day, two or three days a week.
Yeah, okay. And last week, you said, I just wanna, if I'm remembering this right, that we're the biggest school to have the most kids back, right? Okay, so we're, we're doing pretty well in terms of where we are in the state. And it seems like that's been really important to coordinate with the SEA and, and get agreements there. And so moving forward would require that continued coordination. So I appreciate all the work to do all that. Thank you.
Okay, so more to come on April 14th with an update. Dr. Anderson, as I said, will continue working with his team, along with Sean Jordan, to continue that modeling. And we'll come back to you at that regular board meeting to share, to share where we're at.
All right, perfect, thank you, everybody. So with that being said, this is the last agenda item for the board and leadership. But it's the last agenda item for, that was the last agenda item for members of the public. So that being said, may I please have a motion to recess into executive session for the purpose of considering the acquisition of a site of real estate for lease or purchase and considering the minimum price for sale or lease of real estate for 25 minutes?
I'll make the motion. 25 minutes.
Thank you.
I can second it.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion, conversations, questions from anybody? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call the vote. Everybody in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing and seeing all ayes, the motion has been approved. Let's start over there in five minutes. Give everybody a chance to transition, do whatever you.
Rochelle, is it a different Zoom link that we go to?
Yes, different link.
Yes, click on your calendar entry.
All right, with that being said, I hope everybody else that joined us this evening has a great night, and we'll see you next time. Bye, everybody.